Dave, should I let everybody in?
Uh, yep. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. For our workshop meeting and also the continuation of public hearing, proposed local laws to amend the following chapters, 134, 104, and 76. Basically, and mostly, we are focused on chapter 134 and mostly concentrating on the regulations or the zoning for the that was I-1 and then MU-1 and now I-1. So Marie and I met with, before we, you know, take public comment or continue like the public portion of the evening, Marie and I met with, or not met with, talked to both Ted, Ted Fink, our planner and from Green Plan, and also with our attorney, John First, regarding the changes and possible options. And I think it was a great discussion. And so from that, I, and I apologize for sending this late. I didn't receive it till late yesterday, and then I didn't get around to it till today was a working draft that Ted had sent from our discussion with regulations for 13412. It's a working draft on how we thought after our conversation, we, one of the options is the way we wanted to go. Also, Maria had sent over later today, you know, her revision or reworking of MU-1. So tonight, I'd like to get an idea of a direction we definitely want to go if we, you know, and understand if you want to go to an MU-1 or to a mixed use, I should say, in one way or the other. If we look at the working draft, I don't know, Jeff, can you put that up? I just sent it to you from Ted.
Yeah, give me a minute.
Okay.
Go ahead and start and then I'll put it up.
Okay. So in Ted's, he's changed the MU mixed-use district to what he calls regulations for a PMU-2. He put dash two in there because there's also in the I-1 or one of the changes or the MU-1 is, let's see, where are we with that?
I believe this is the one.
No, this is not, no.
Okay. Sent that it's an attachment, a PDF.
When did you send it?
I just sent it like five minutes ago.
If which version are you wanting us to be looking at? The one that came from?
Came from Ted, that's a PDF from Ted thing.
I got it. I got it. I'll open it up. Give me a second.
I got.
Hold on. Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, so in this, and this is, and Ted threw this together fairly quickly, so it's definitely a working draft and we can change things or whatever, but I kind of want to get feel if people think this is the right direction to go. From, from past meetings, I think it is. It's definitely more of the way I want to go and have a few more controls in one step. So we can read through these if you want, or I don't know, did anyone have a chance to read these? Because I was sent it like, I forget what time today.
I was able to make a cursory read-through, but I feel like I need time with the document. I think, you know, I think I got it at 4:30.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I didn't want any action on this, but I mean, basically it goes to one more step. There's a step for a conceptual plan, which would go to the village board, and it'd be for a special use. And at that stage, the, what would be asked for from the, from the applicant or developer would be a conceptual plan. It would also include a generic environmental impact study, which would, you know, get into the study, traffic studies, environmental impacts, and all of that good stuff. And so the board at that time would have, would have the first crack at it, the first chance to look at it all. And then the GEIS would, would be performed, and I think from that we would understand a little maybe what can and cannot be built down there. It would help instruct our decision anyway. So I think that would be a good thing. We'd also give a chance to the, to the public. There'd be a public hearing that would be included in that, so they could see the conceptual plan. And also, I think that's it on that. That that kind of would be included. I think it's down, is it down a little bit further, Jeff? Special use permit approvals, right there. So the general statement, the concept requirement outlined here and shall include a written narrative describes how the proposal serves the purpose of enumerate, enumerated in 13412, and as envisioned, the Coleman Comprehensive Plan. The narrative shall include information of potential phasing or explanation of how the proposal complies with the design standards, requirements set forth, and a description of the housing mix and other proposed uses. Environmental analysis, the concept plan shall include a map of the site included in the special use permit application showing environmental, environmental features and limitations that would affect development of the site, including areas of known contamination and remediation required by state and federal agencies before development can be undertaken. The concept plan will also identify surface water, steep slopes, wildlife habitats, and other areas of environmental sensitivity. Three, concept plan, the concept plan will include an illustrative plan showing at an appropriate level of detail buildings and other structures, the pedestrians, bicycle and vehicular circulation system, including off-site areas affected by the plant, vehicle parking areas, open space, and recreation areas and other required items proposed on the site. Concept plan shall be prepared to serve as a template for the application of specified design principles in order to achieve desired form and appearance of development. Information provided shall include the following, all of, all improvements planned in conjunction with the proposed uses, including general locations, layout, and dimensions of structure, square footage of building floor areas, number of residential units, parking areas, streets, sidewalks, and trails, bicycle paths, utilities, recreation areas, conservation areas, and other information necessary to demonstrate compliance with the subsection. Conceptual plan for possible future uses. See, projected trans, where are we?
Sorry.
Projected phasing, projected phasing is a means to provide transportation, water supply, wastewater, emergency, school, and other accommodations. Sufficient time to meet the needs of proposed residential and commercial uses. The phasing plan shall include the proposed sequence of phasing of the construction of infrastructure and buildings, and the ratio of residential retail and other non-residential floor space to be built in each phase, estimated dates and interim uses of property awaiting development. In addition, the plan should address any proposed temporary use or location of uses during construction periods. Fiscal impacts, a standard fiscal impact model such as the one described in Rutger's University Center for Urban Policy Research publication entitled The Fiscal Impact. Will be used to describe the fiscal effects of the concept plan on utilities, transportation, fire safety, and schools, as well as property tax revenue. Projected transportation impacts, these include the expected number of trips, peak and daily, and analysis of the impact of those trips on the adjacent street systems, the the adequacy of ingress and egress to and from the side air, and proposed mitigation measures to limit any projected adverse impacts. Mitigation measures may include improvements to the street system, sidewalk system, or specific programs to reduce traffic impact, such as encouraging the use of public transit, car pools, van pools, pedestrian and bicycle facility, as well as a proposed connections to existing or planned pedestrian and bicycle facilities and other alternatives to single occupancy vehicles. And E public engagement, village will include a plan for involvement by relevant stakeholders and will facilitate their involvement and collaboration by seeking public feedback on the proposed concept plan early in the review process. The developers of the concept plan are encouraged to see community involvement in project design, planning, and decision-making in the early public outreach events hosted by the village. SECRE, the concept plan will be subject to a draft generic environmental impact statement under SECRE and accordance with the procedures outlined in six NYCRR 61710. The level of detail provided should reflect the degree, degree to which the application has refined the concept plan. The level of detail provided in the G, in the DGIS may affect the site-specific seeker review required during planning board site plan review at approval stage. When more site-specific information is provided at the DGIS stage, lesser information may be required at the site-specific secret review stage. Planning board, when the village board receives a proposal for approval of a concept plan special use permit, the village board shall refer such concept plan to the village planning board for its advisory review and recommendations. The planning board shall review the concept plan and shall discuss it with the applicant as a regular meeting. Planning board may invite informal public comment at such a meeting. The planning board shall report its recommendations to the village board within 60 days after its next regular, regularly scheduled meeting, following the date of such referral of the proposed concept plan. And the planning board's recommendations may be to adopt, adopt modifications, or reject the proposed concept plan. If the planning board fails to file a report within 60 days, sorry, within 60 days, it shall be deemed to have no objection to approval of the concept plan special use permit. Other agencies, the village board shall request all other agency recommendations on the concept plan to be forwarded to the village board within 60 days after referral. Failure of any other agency to submit comments within the 60-day period shall not prevent the village board from taking action on the concept plan special use permit. Public hearing prior to approving the concept plan special use permit, the village board shall hold a public hearing on the concept plan in accordance with the hearing procedures found in 134-16F of the zoning law. If the planning board provides a report recommendation to the village board as provided for in 134-12D, said report shall become an official part of the minutes of the public hearing. K, village board action, the village board shall refer the application to the Department of County Department of Planning under section 239M of General Municipal Law prior to taking action on special use permit application. Following completion of the public hearing and the generic SECRE review process, the village board may act to approve, approves modification or can, or conditions, or disapprove the concept plan special use permit application in the exercise of its sole legal discretion. And E, site plan review and approval in each case where a building or alteration or conversion is proposed in this district, the site plan shall be submitted to the code enforcement officer who shall refer the site plan of the proposed building to the planning board for its review. Such board shall determine that all the requirements of this chapter have been met, including the plan and standard requirements for site plan approvals, and after holding a public hearing at each case, following the procedure required for approval of site plans under the village law shall approve, approve with modification or disapprove said site plan. If modifying or disproving any site plan, the village shall enter its reasons for such action in its records. The applicant, let's see, the in modifying or disproving any site plan aboard shall enter its reason for such action in its records, the applicant shall pay a fee in the same amount as that required for application for a variance to cover the cost of publication, notice of hearing, recording, and transcribing the minutes of the hearing and decisions. Next, we have the permitted uses, so I'm not going to read all those off unless you'd like me to. He struck out a number on the top, and as any residential use approved by the village board concept plan, special unit use, use permit, building structures, municipal parking, uses owned by the village, cold spring office buildings for editorial business, professional officers, research and design, live work units, including attendant sales of work output. Professor, professional services, retail, and recreational uses and facilities, restaurants, conversion of a first-floor commercial, professional, or retail space to residential use is prohibited. In addition, existing storefront glass air cannot be reduced during, during renovation or use change or change from residential to commercial for commercial, professional, retail use, commercial amusement venues, signs, accessories to, signs accessory to an establishment located on the same lot, provided such signs are limited as set forth in chapter 104. Manufacturing or assembling uses approved by the village board concept plan special use permit, which operation will not create any dangerous injuries, noxious, or otherwise objectionable fire, explosive, radioactive, blah, blah, blah. Crossed out was also an application for building permit shall be referred to the planning board as set forth above. And then we get into the minimum requirements, which I, which I won't go through right now. But that's, that's basically what, what the change would be. I think the working with a special use permit that was required and is the first step I am going to the board is something I wanted to see having a public hearing and having the GEIS impact study performed. Any comments from everyone, anyone on this? I know you're having that time. We're not going to make any decisions tonight, but I think we, is this something or what you would like to see, or is it too restrictive, or do you want more controls, or do you feel we're going in the right direction?
Are you asking the board or are you asking the public?
I'm asking the board.
Okay, just making clear for the folks who are raising hands. Not bored. Um, Dave, other than, other than the, the fiscal study, how is what has been proposed by Mr. Fink different than seeker review?
I think that the, having it upfront with the board is the difference in this versus doing a secret review on a site application. Although I'm not well-versed in that, I think that's the difference. The difference here is we're having a study upfront, which is generic and goes with the concept plan.
So that comes, that would come before the, the Board of Trustees, and then from, from there, there would be additional, there would be the next phase of seeker review for an actual proposal.
Yes.
And planning board review.
The secret review would be involved with the site plan review, and some of what is done in the GS may be used and may, maybe sufficient in the review at the planning board level.
And are you proposing this text that Ted put forward as alternate text for MU-1 or in addition to?
In, no, as replacing.
So this would be the definition of the zone?
Yes.
That would replace 134-12 under your proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, I, I looked through what Marie had sent earlier, sent back some comments. And I realized this came through late. I sort of cross-referenced what we had looked at previously and what I did not get a chance to read through in detail is the first part of the first three, three pages of Ted's proposal here. So I really do need to sit down with that. I think, I think there's some stuff in here that is sort of misplaced in, in terms of where it is. And that's just sort of a probably grammar type things. So I'd like to really spend some time. He has something listed under permitted uses, which I don't think are permitted use. Conversion of a first floor, I don't think should go under permitted use. Signs, I don't think goes under permitted use, but I need to really look through the whole thing, go back over what we have. Look at what we were doing previously, and I realized the way he wrote this is specifically for one property in the village, which he says is basically the last large property that the village has, and I understand that. But I want to really take some more time with this, Dave, so I'm not ready to make much more of a comment on it. Other than, you know, that I need time. I did look through what Marie sent earlier. And it was, it was more of a basics Ted has added a lot of stuff in the front that I need to spend some time with, so I needed at least a couple of days of that before I can come back on this one.
Okay, totally understandable. If there's, that's one thing that we can focus on and should send in comments on the uses and also on the, on the dimensions. That's something we can include and we can change as a board while we're forming this. So if there's something that's striking, like you, you know, whatever, don't like manufacturing at all, or don't think that's that, that should be in there at all, then I think, you know, you should make your, you know, those concerns or thoughts known, so that
We'd like to understand what is envisioned by commercial amusement venues.
I, it's a good question. I think, does that mean theaters or no, is that somewhere else? I don't.
I think that we, we need that clarity from, from Mr. Fink, because I mean, you could, you could imagine that going to movie theaters, you could imagine it going to arcades, you could imagine it going to, right, a uses that would have intense periodic, if it were a movie theater, right, you'd have, you could potentially have large runs of cars every three hours or whatever it might, whatever the spacing of the films might be. I'm, I'm not saying the movie theaters are bad things. It might be cool to have a movie theater in the village again, but I, this definition, there is no definition here, so I want to understand what he's proposing here.
I think we can.
I think for those questions, I think if you sent those to me, if anyone has questions, I forward them to Ted. And we will, you know, I'm going to be speaking with Ted, I'm sure, soon. And or we can have Ted at one, he's available Thursday, if we can get stuff to me and I can I make sure that he's available. I said so far his calendar is clear. We could clear those things up or any other question, but.
Can, can we, you know, in, in terms of a commercial amusement venues, we can determine that we don't want that in this list? Or as Tweet says today, we could put back studios if we want studios, depending on is, is we said we may have to deflate some of these, but some of these things we may not want. This isn't like a massive piece of property. It's big in terms of this village, but it's not big enough to put everything.
Right. So Change every, anything we want here. We have a lot of discretion.
Do, um, did the lot sizes and maximums and minimums terminated, were those changed between the two graphs, or is that the same on both Marie's and this one?
They're the same.
They're the same on here. I mean, that's, I mean, that's up for discussion too, but they're the same as what Marie. And I think they're, correct me if I'm wrong, Marie, there, there, there's some of it's a little larger than what's the, in the village code right now for R1.
R1 is 7, 7,500.
Right.
So yes, but MU-1 has always had a larger lot size.
Right.
Larger minimum lot size.
So those are the discussed, or I mean, you know, obviously the smaller, I'm not sure how much it affects if it's 3,000 feet more or whatever, how many more houses or can be placed on there, but I'm sure that there's some effect by larger or smaller lots. So, you know, that's something that needs to be discussed and has to be put into this. If everyone's comfortable with these, we can leave this, or I think that's something we should discuss with the planner.
I, I would like the, the planner to appear in a public session to answer questions, please.
And I, I haven't read through this. Earlier on, I know there was a section on, on like a part open space within this. And I, I'm not sure if I see it here, but you know, I did want to make sure that that is in there, a certain percentage to be open space or green space within this property.
In terms, in Ted's proposal, there is no required minimum or maximum of percentage of lot area, sorry, percentage of that, that was in the, the one that I sent around.
So there was nothing for a green area, right?
Correct. You had nothing for, for any use. There was no percentage.
Okay, got you. So that is something that, yeah, definitely we would like to see put back in something like this. Okay.
Jeff, on this word, first, the page is up now, is that, could you scroll down a little bit more for like on four? Is that the end of four? Okay, nevermind.
Yeah, it was building, I remember the building percentages, but not the.
Right, I thought I read somewhere green. I know we, we had talked about, I mean, that has to definitely be included.
Well, Marie's draft, I believe, does address open space versus conservation space, which is very important.
Public opens, I forgot, there were two different ways to put it, but.
Projected open space and open space.
Right.
And then I would want to go back, and I know there are definitions in 134 in general to see if we need to add more definitions based on some of the things we have to pick out of this. That we, we may want to define or add definitions in, in this section of 134. I'm not sure how that's done, but I know I've seen some chapters where there are different sets of definitions in different parts of the, the code chapters.
I would think we would not want different definitions.
Okay, so, so we'd look up at the top and, and if we need to add something.
Definitions section.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'd like to, if you can, send me, send me questions. I will send them in advance to Ted, and if we can all make a meeting on Thursday, I think we should forward to that, so that he can answer questions on, you know, what changes will be needed or what can be, and maybe answer some questions on percentages. And if there's things that are missing, we can add them and things that we want added, I think that would be the time to do it. So everyone, all right with that? We, you know, we'll schedule that with Ted and back to you.
I'm available Thursday.
Yeah, it would be like seven o'clock. I think he had a meeting earlier, five, and wasn't sure if he could make 6:30.
I mean, I'm good for Thursday.
Okay, so look over both. I think, I think, I think basically the same what Maria had come up with. I mean, originally, her initial one was, didn't have, I, I don't think it was as clear as the procedure for for the board, for going to the board in the special use permit, so.
There is quite a significant difference between the two in terms of, in terms of a, a big step in process and an additional, additional board approval. So it's, it is, it is quite different than what Marie proposed.
Okay, so I will schedule that meeting tentatively and make sure Ted can be there and maybe perhaps John also. With that said, is, do we want to get into, is there anything else, or we'll just, I'll hear, open this up to the public?
I need to ask for clarity because there were so many different versions of things that got sent quite late in the day today. Dave, you, in between Marie sending a draft of 13412, you sent marked up comments on her draft.
Right.
I believe that what you're, what you are proposing right now is to set aside that, and then Marie came back with another iteration based on feedback later in the day. I believe you are asking to replace that later iteration, which incorporated comments from you and me and Fran, I don't know if Tweet sent comments in as well. You're asking to replace that work with Fink's work.
No, I'm asking to consider all of them, and the public hasn't seen those, so that doesn't need to be public discussion right now. I think what, what I'm asking, well.
I'm just trying to be clear where I should focus my energy on reading for Thursday, or if all of these things are still on the table, if all of these iterations are still on the table. I would hope that they are.
Yes, they are, and please, on the, please review all of them. They're not, not that long, not that lengthy.
It's just, it's just hard at 4:30 the day of a meeting when everybody has.
I understand that.
Yeah.
We all have jobs.
I think there are two letters that were received by the village board from public input that should be read into the record.
Yeah.
We're done sharing this with this document for now?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. One person has their hand raised, and then there's the two written comments. I don't know if you want to do the written comments or the verbal. the written comments or the verbal?
Uh, written comments first.
Okay.
I, I don't have them screened up. Does someone have them?
I have them in front of me if you want to read one.
Sure.
There's one from Mr. Henderson and one from Jeff Amato. Which one do you want first?
Uh, doesn't, doesn't matter, whatever one's on.
Mr. Henderson's, Mr. Henderson's, um, relates to the discussion we were just having. Um, please can you forward this note to the board and acknowledge receipt? Thank you. Dear Mayor and Board of Trustees, I would like to second Karen Mankiewicz's plea that there be no change to the zoning at Marathon until there is a solution for how vehicles will enter the site. Let's say there's a proposal for a beautiful mixed use, in quotes, village within a village that combines all the features outlined in the LWRS. How will vehicles get in and out? It's such an important question. If there's no realistic answer, then it seems like we're wasting everyone's time. A solar farm would be a good option. Sincerely, Peter Henderson, 11 Marion Avenue, Cold Spring. And the second is from Jeff Amato, the Chair of the Recreation Commission. To the Cold Spring Village Board of Trustees, I'm reaching out on behalf of the Village of Cold Spring Recreation Commission regarding the proposed designation of the lot containing Mayor's Park to remain as I-1 industrial rather than PR-1 Parks and Recreation. We understand that the I-1 industrial designation is better suited for the water treatment facility and the Village Highway Department. However, Mayor's Park and the Pavilion meet the exact definition of the Parks and Recreation District that was, quote, "created to define areas in the village which provide opportunities for the enjoyment of the environment, including proximity to water, recreational opportunities, opportunities for relaxation, and the opportunity to enjoy the scenery." The Parks and Recreation District applies to the Waterfront Park, Dockside Park, Mayor's Park, Ronald Mc- Ronald McConville slash Top Park, close quote. A PR-1 designation for Mayor's Park and the Pavilion is also consistent with the Village Comprehensive Plan and the Cold Spring Local Waterfront Revitalization Strategy. We understand that the policy of the code update effort is to eliminate municipal district, excuse me, multiple districts occurring within a single zone. While the single lot, single zone approach is cleaner and more desirable, there should be exceptions for extenuating circumstances. If the entire lot in question were to remain I-1 industrial, there's a potential for Mayor's Park and/or the Pavilion to be used for something other than a park in the future. While unlikely, a new Board of Trustees with a different agenda could feasibly develop or change the use of Mayor's Park and/or the Pavilion. It is the mission statement of the Recreation Commission to increase the recreational use of all village parks, particularly Mayor's Park. The recent survey sent out to village residents was just the start of pickup games and eventually leagues for various sports and activities at Mayor's Park. We're working to have the fields and courts rehabilitated to facilitate, facilitate more sports and activities. We already work closely with Haldane to accommodate baseball and soccer to be played at Mayor's Park. We're also coordinating with Phillips Town Sports Leagues to make use of one of the few available parks in our village. Similarly, the Pavilion is a popular destination of local residents to be reserved for parties or events. I have watched or attended the last few working sessions on September 28th, October 5th, and October 14th regarding the code updates. It has been undisputed that Mayor's Park and the Pavilion should stay and always remain a park. The letter from Donald McDonald, former Chair of the Code Update Committee, just a correction, it's the former Chair of the Zoning Board, um, clearly identified the justification for two districts within a single zone. The other alternative presented was to designate the entire zone PR-1 Parks and Recreation. Either option would be preferable to the zone containing Mayor's Park remaining I-1 industrial. While multiple zones in a single lot may not be desired by all, concessions should be made to ensure that Mayor's Park and the Pavilion forever remain a park. Sincerely, and it's signed by multiple members, Jeff Amato, Ruth, Ruth Ann Cullen and Barr, Steve Etta, John Moranti, Trevor Knight, Village of Cold Spring Recreation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So we'll now go to any, uh, anybody that would like to make comments. Just for the public, uh, what we're, what we're looking at is, uh, right now, I think we went back to the I-1, um, we're, we're considering and discussing with attorneys and planner on, uh, on MU1 or a, a mixed use anyway. So changing it back to a mixed use property, um, the ones that we had that are designated as I-1. So, um, with that said, uh, if anyone there, Jeff, you can.
Yep, okay, um, Karen, you've had your hand up the longest.
Where'd she go?
She's, she's speaking, but I think she's muted.
Sorry, God, sorry, thanks, uh, Mr. Miranda. I have two, um, process questions. One is, um, it seems to me that decisions about definitions and lot size and whatever should be made by majority of the Board of Trustees, um, not the city planner. And I'm just curious, I don't know the history of the city planner, is it a consulting position and how does that work, number one? And then number two, um, in the spirit of public hearings, which I think is really great that you're doing this, and I applaud the trustees for having so many, although we're all tired and I'm sure you are, are too. Um, in the spirit of public hearings, um, those of us who are attending from the public need to be able to see these documents. And I heard, I thought Ms. Foley say there were at least three or four documents that, uh, the trustees needs to review by Thursday. And I, I really do think that in the, in the spirit of public hearing, those need to be posted on the website, so we can all look at that, those of us who want to and, and maybe attend Thursday if possible. Thank you.
Okay, a- as far as the, uh, the, uh, the documents that were mentioned, they're, they're like, they're drafts that we're working off of, um, and so, uh, I, I think it, uh, I just think it's be- it's better for the board to be, to kind of formalize something, so that there's not a number of different iterations out there or something we're not even working on. I think that will just be confusing.
Okay, I get that. Yeah, okay, that's a good point, but I do think at some point, even if you, uh, if you have something that's, you're going to vote on, if yeah, if that minimum, you can't post it, at least read it through, but I think something needs to be posted before you vote. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That was a good point.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, Jill Golden.
Muted Jill.
Jill, unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm ceding to Jim first. I'll, I'll comment after his comment.
Okay. Uh, Jim Labat?
Here we go. All right, there it is. Uh, well, uh, I appreciate, uh, the mayor and the trustees, uh, rethinking this through this new category. PM, PMU two, uh, seems a little more nuanced and I'm hearing a lot of, uh, things that, uh, I want to hear concerning, um, traffic circulation. I guess my question, I'm, I'm sure this is not really answerable at this point, is, uh, whatever, um, article that was three or three E projected circulation. Uh, now, I'm, I'm guessing that's an estimated traffic volume internal to the site. Or, uh, does anybody know whether that is really like, uh, in a full, a full-blown traffic study on proposed routes? Um, I, I doubt that, maybe somebody does, but it's probably way too early in the process to know that. Uh, again, I'm just trying to be out ahead of, even, even though this addresses my main concern, which is, um, getting the car out ahead of the horse in terms of, uh, having a concept plan and then dealing with site access later. Um, I'm, I'm wondering about how that projected circulation analysis is done. Now, this sounds great that, um, you're going to have a, uh, an EIS. I've, I've taken part in a few of those myself. Um, can you, can you tell me, uh, who, who does the EIS? Does anybody know who, uh, who does that?
It's the developer or the applicant would be responsible for that.
So the developer is doing their own environmental impact study analysis?
Yes.
Okay, that's a big red flag for me. Uh, I'd like to go on the record for that, that, that's, um, that's a little. Okay.
That, that wasn't, in talking with Ted Fink today, it's not my understanding of it, that, but I, like I said, I'm not well versed in this. Marie's been through it, so um, I'm not sure, but we should look into that because I, I would agree with you. It would be like the fox in the hen house, maybe, kind of a thing. Um, but, you know, to answer your other questions with the, uh, with the concept plan, I think the only way to actually look at this and look at the traffic flows is to have the concept plan and to say, well, there, it works or not, because there's something to work off of, um, not just a blank page. So, um, that would be up to, I, I know that the cost of the, uh, of the generic, uh, environmental study are, are on the, uh, are from the, the applicant. Um, he would pay for those. I'm not sure the makeup of it, but in the concept plan, when they present that, then that plan would then go to the study and it would, you know, the study would bear out whether you could actually do what's proposed or not.
Okay, and again, or with the document you were showing us earlier, had a, um, was addressing, uh, vehicle circulation already at the design, um, stage, correct? Um, I saw that in there a couple of times. So, so that's, that's good. Uh, I like, uh, that trustee Foley, uh, uh, her recommendation of having the planner appear, uh, at a public meeting. Um, I'm definitely looking forward to, uh, hearing that, so, um, please make that happen. Uh, and, uh, that's, that's really all I have for, for right now. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jill, did you want to add?
Yeah, basically just, just to, to add to everybody's concern about vehicular access in it, the, one of the potential ideas that I saw for Luna Terrace access certainly seemed like it could have a profound impact on the character of our community over here. Um, so, you know, just making sure that that is really integral to moving forward and, in making sure that that's resolved in terms of a, a good plan for vehicular access before anything else goes, you know, moves forward.
Okay, I think we share your concern.
Um, Dave Marzolo?
Yeah, I just briefly want to say that I think that the letter coming from the Rec Department, uh, from Jeff Amato and all those guys at the Rec Department was very well put together and I, you know, I wouldn't want to say anything besides that and that I agree with everything that had in that letter about protecting Mayor's Park for sports and for the community. So, uh, great job, Rec Department, and thank you for hearing my comment.
You. Um, Sean Carney?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. Uh, my name's Sean Carney, 24 Pauling Avenue. Uh, I'll try not to repeat myself from, uh, the letter I sent to the board last week. It was my understanding that last week, uh, the board decided to revisit MU1 and see if there was some additional guardrails uh, or controls, uh, that the board, uh, could put in place in the zoning, uh, language that would give uh, the Board of Trustees a bit more comfort. Uh, I couldn't see too much of, uh, Mr. Fink's proposed zoning district tonight, but it seems that we're getting away from MU1 and, and drafting a new distinct district with a distinct review process. And, um, I'm just not sure what happened between the last meeting and this meeting. I think, like I said in my letter, there's a lot, there's a lot of work over a decade worth of work that went into the MU1 district. And I think the recommendations of the MU1 and the Code Update Committee are very strong. Uh, but if there's more controls that are needed, I still believe that that's a better path than trying to draft an entirely new and unique district. So, uh, thank you again, though. I, I know it's a lot of work, but, uh, I just want to say that I, I believe the MU1 district is strong. I think with minor adjustments, it could get the village board the level of comfort that they want. And, um, regarding traffic and egress and ingress, if, if you look at section 13727B of the village code, that's the site plan review process. So when we go in front of the planning board for any application for site plan, we would need to do a traffic analysis for not only the property, but the community and surrounding community. So that's already covered in, in the village code and in the site plan review process. Um, from the little that I saw from Mr. Fink's recommendation, you're just doubling the process once with the village board and then again with the planning board. So, uh, I, I don't know, uh, how we got here, but I, I would just, uh, recommend the easier path of putting more controls on the recommendations of the Code Update Committee for MU1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else has their hand raised?
Okay, so at this point, we'll continue the, uh, the public hearing, uh, till next Thursday, tentatively. Um, and, uh, that'll depend on the, uh, availability of, uh, our planner for that meeting.
You mean Tuesday, two days from now, not a week, Thursday, right? The 21st.
Thursday, yes. At seven o'clock.
It's coming Tuesday as well, a week from today.
Yeah, we have the auditors coming.
Well, Dave, uh, one, uh, point that was raised was the, uh, the, uh, village property at the north end of the village. Uh, the proposal, when we went back to I-1 was to make it I-1. Um, I think that the proposal now should be to make the combined zone I-1 and PR-1.
I would agree with that.
Would you like to take a vote on that?
Like to make a question?
So we're talking about the Mayor's Park, um, water, wastewater plant and highway garage?
Highway, municipal parking lot, wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the, mid, parking around the municipal, uh, around Mayor's Park, Mayor's Park and the Pavilion.
Okay.
I propose that they be changed to a combined I-1 and MU1, sorry, PR-1.
I'm sorry, did you say instead of a PR-1?
No.
I-1 and PR-1, a combined, combined, uh, the property would be identified as I-1 and PR-1. The other properties in that area would stay I-1. And that's the property at the end of Northern Avenue, um, the property, Janet Russ property and the Riverview property.
I'll second your motion, Marie.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor, or sorry, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposition? Okay, so carried. Thank you, Dave.
Anything else before we move ahead?
No.
Okay, next we have, uh, Resolution 722021, accepting the bid in the firehouse boiler. I did reference checks, they came out, um, you know, positive. Uh, let's see, is it here? Where are we here? I don't see this. Okay, so the, uh, Resolution 72, uh, 2021, awarding the bid for the firehouse boiler, whereas Village of Cold Spring, the village needs to replace the boiler in the village-owned building occupied by the Cold Spring Fire Company located at 154 Main Street. And whereas the villagers received three written bids as per the village procurement policy, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the replacement of the boiler located at 154 Main Street to the lowest bidder, AVL contractors, at a cost of nineteen thousand, uh, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Hey, trustee Riley?
Yes.
Trustee Foley? Trustee Foley, you're muted.
I'm saying you're unmuted. Yes, I'm getting there, sorry, yes.
Trustee Murphy? I think we didn't, uh, I, I'd make a motion to, I do, we didn't have a motion or a second on this, right? So I like a motion to award the bid, um, for Resolution 722021.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I'm gonna start over with the roll call vote.
Yeah.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods? May Morandi?
Hi.
Officially adopted October 19th by a vote of five zero.
When are they available, Dave?
I did not ask him that. Soon as possible, hopefully. I'll let you know. I'll contact him tonight.
Thanks.
Next is a request from the Chamber of Commerce for the Cold Spring Glow. This is familiar with this. It's a number of bags lined up along Main Street, basically, and is it one day of the in the winter holiday season?
Jeff Mickelson from the Chamber is on the call if he wants to add. Is there any questions?
Sure, yeah. Hi, thanks for having me. I'm the advocacy chair for the Chamber. The 14 Church Street. And yes, that's basically it. Luminarias from the traffic light down to the river on Main Street. The Main Street businesses will be holding extended hours that day. They'd also like to put up a banner similar to the one we did for Community Day, and this will all be organized and funded by the Chamber itself. So the date we have in mind is Friday, December 10th with rain date for Sunday, December 12th. And we're just seeking approval from the board to host that event.
I the banner is a bit problematic because we really aren't supposed to even be hanging that banner up yearly. So so I wouldn't be able to give you the okay for that, unless then we have to deal with talking to Putnam County and it's a whole turns it to a whole procedure that I don't think we should get into, but basically because we're not supposed to be putting banners up. I mean, no restrictions on that. I would say, say yes, as long as we had some way to put them up, but we don't have a way to actually put them in place either. We always have to tap Putnam County for that when we do our one event.
Okay, well, that'll cut down on our expenses anyway.
And that's a central Hudson issue as they own the utility poles that we have to attach them to.
Got it.
Besides that, I'll make a motion to approve the Glow.
I'll second.
Then, December 10th?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Glad you're doing it again.
All in favor?
I.
I. I.
Trustee Miller, creation or event start?
Yeah.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes, and she did a lot of work on that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a request for a Boy Scouts Troop 437. I don't know if Irene's on or.
Irene is on.
Hello?
Okay, well, I sent an email to Jeff and some photographs. I was I'm a volunteer at the Boy Scouts and I'm part of the fundraiser and coordination and Troop 437. Boy Scouts are sixth grade to senior or 12th grade for anyone who's unfamiliar with that. Cub Scouts are the ones that are younger, fifth grade and below. Anyway, so I wanted to propose for community service hours, which is required for certain merit badges and just yearly requirements for the scouts. Sections in Cold Spring Village, perhaps, that the scouts can take over in terms of a one-day cleanup, some of the overgrowth in some of the areas. I sent pictures, like one example is Paul, I'm sorry, Academy between 301 and Paulding. There's like a stretch there that's kind of like a no man's land. The it's part of the town. It's sidewalk overgrowth and weeds coming up from the streets and the curb and everything else. And it's my understanding that the town or the Highway Department is responsible for clearing that. But I also understand the town is overwhelmed and the Highway Department is overwhelmed by it. And if we can pick several spots, the scouts perhaps could clean them. And I sent Jeff some pictures as an example. So in order for us to do, thing is also like, well, why don't you just go and do it? Why are you asking us? Because we need it to be officially signed off as community hours by somebody official in the community, as opposed to me just grabbing a bunch of kids and saying we did a Boy Scout project, which is what I thought I could do, but I cannot do that.
I think it's a good idea. I think what's needed is a coordination with the Highway Department. And I think you were having a number of kids, so I guess there wouldn't be kids, whatever, young, young adults working.
Yes.
And men working on the sides of the roads or something that we should have some type of conage or some type, you know, to make people aware that work's going on. So I'm not sure, did you want to get this started this year? Or maybe this is something we could start? I don't know where did you, when did you want to start this?
Um, well, again, my own not my own lack of understanding of how this process really works, I just thought like, oh, we can just go and do it. Like, you know, I thought I'd be able to do this by the end of October. So I, so I don't, like I said, I need guidance, actually. So clearly, if it's something that can't be done, I mean, you know, the weather is going to change by the end of October. This is also why I thought the cutoff would be the end of October for myself. So if it can't be done for this year, then we can get it started for 2022 if if that would be better. Do you know what I mean? So if that's sort of how that should work, so I need guidance and I need someone to make some decisions for me. So I'm open to all suggestions.
Sorry to interrupt for a second, but maybe with working with Bugsy from the Highway Department, we can actually identify some of the the major areas that need cleanup besides the ones that you found, because maybe there's some that are high on our list of priority that could be attended to sooner rather than later.
Okay. And then also, like I said, it depends on, like, for me, in order to do that, to coordinate the amount of Boy Scout volunt, adult Boy Scout volunteers that can also supervise with the event to be in accordance for the Boy Scouts, their safety requirements. So, you know, yes, it just requires a lot of coordination and I'm willing to work with whoever.
Irene, I would pick if you could maybe a little more information on like the number of the number of of people that'll be involved and where you would like to do it. You know, Bugsy Ken, if he has other sections, definitely you can tap into him. But if we knew how many, how many people and where and when you were going to be, then we could just set up some, you know, some barriers or something for traffic and, you know, so everyone's safe and we know what's going on in areas. And it's just not, you know, random people doing stuff on the street.
Correct. Right, right. Me and, you know, a couple of bags and a shovel and some kids. So, all right, so I will contact the Highway Department and this Bugsy, individual named Bugsy, and then I can coordinate a little further with him. And then if there's anything, so it seems like it won't be a problem to get a sign off from the town for community hours, as long as it is obviously properly coordinated with the Highway Department and a better, a better fleshed out plan.
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for considering. Yes.
Irene, one of the locations you had listed was Iron and Pearl, and that's the village in Nelsonville?
Oh, we'll see. There you go. This is exactly what I I need to find out. Nelsonville, well, that's a different meeting to deal with, so we'll deal with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was excited when I saw this. I think it's a great thing to do. And I could, I could point out a whole bunch of places, but
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
I think it's really, I think it's really great. So I was really excited about it. Thank you.
Totally coming out of their houses and offering equipment and everything else. So I think the town would definitely like like it. And who knows, maybe even the Girl Scouts would want to coordinate also. I could also reach out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Irene. Thank you.
Night.
Uh, next up is winter parking permits. Know if anyone's familiar or not familiar with this, basically, we offer permitting for winter months at the municipal lot for Jeff, correct me, was it fifty dot forty dollars for?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars for the, yeah.
And that's for the month of?
December 1st through April 15th.
Okay, so what we would like to do is just continue that practice and just asking the board, we already have stickers are already made, right? I think I had them made for this year.
Correct. We have the stickers. We just need to put an ad in the paper to let people know.
And it's open to to anyone in the village, right? The purchase of the permit?
Yeah.
Correct.
And it's at the municipal lot. So I'd like to make a motion to continue the the sale of permits or for forty dollars for the winter months for all residents of the village. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, approval of minutes, Village Board meeting nine, 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 2021. I'll make a motion to approve. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is September 16th, 2021, Village Board Meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry, tweet says it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, approval of minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for for September 28th, 2021, Village Board Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yes. I would like to offer an apology to the Phillips Town Highway Department. I disparaged their work in a recent Village Board meeting. In my opinion, the Phillips Town Highway Department does a fantastic job in in everything that they are responsible for. And they consistently help out the Village of Cold Springs Highway Department with the volunteering of people, equipment, facilities, et cetera. So my apologies to the Phillips Town Highway Department. You do a great job.
Thank you. I have one thing. We, there was a lot of concern about a meeting that was held. I didn't know anyone was up on the on the the shoreline restabilization plan down at the down at the dockside. This has been going on, I believe it was Joe at the meeting, actually, the head guy from the state joked that it, I think it's been going on early 2000s that they've been working on this. So the the stabilization plan is, it's kind of going to be, well, this could be a model for other communities. Basically, we're, they're trying to get rid of, and this is Parks working with the state. They've contracted this, so it's moving ahead. The shoreline will be cleaned of all invasive species that that will be piled up on the property and disposed of properly, or some of it may stay there. That's to be determined. Some rocks will be in, but there's specific stone that they'll be using. It'll be an all-natural barrier. It's not going to be just rubble or something similar to along the rivers, Riverfront Park. So there'll be vegetation planted after they, after they've gotten rid of all the endanger, the invasive species and have cleaned this out. There will be barriers put in place that'll be natural barriers to stop the erosion of the shorelines. And and that's, that's basically the plan. They're hoping this will be a model on how different communities can can stop erosion and ensure the shoreline stays as long as possible. There will be a boat ramp for that will be available and installed. That's part of the project. And there will also be a small a small path, a walking path, but it'll be ADA compliant going around the perimeter of of the park. So those are the things that are included in that. They plan on starting probably late November, but maybe closer to December. And that's that's more the way it sounded like they would start in December, probably only going to last year. I take a year to do. They're planning on doing the planting next year when, you know, planting is, you know, the, not the winter, so that's a more seasonal thing. So that'll be done. It's under strict guidance and guide, you know, guidelines by the state. So state will be overseeing everything, the DC and the parks. As I said, the contractor has been, you know, is has been selected and awarded the job. And let's see what else is around that. I think that's all I know right now. There was concern that Vinnie Tamania, who's running for mayor, was at the park and he was. I can assure you, I didn't invite Vinnie. He was there and I'm not sure why. So for all those interested, you'll have to ask Mr. Tamania why he was there or who invited him. And that's, that's all I have. If you, if there's anything else you'd like to know about that, ask away.
Thanks for the update.
Thanks, Dave.
Anything else?
No.
Nothing here.
Okay, anything else from the public on anything?
Hi, Dave.
Not anything, but yeah. Village related.
DeMarzolo?
Hi, Fran.
Hey, Dave.
But I was, I stopped to see Jeff and he had suggested that perhaps tonight would, I was on the agenda for my sentencing hearing.
No, I'd say next Tuesday, the next Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That was it. A great job with the P-1, PR-1 and Mayor's Park. Thank you, guys. That was really, I applaud that decision.
You. Anyone else, Jeff?
I believe that's it.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Dave, a question following up on on Dave Marzolo, if I can. Are we having a discussion ahead of time or the discussion will happen at next Tuesday's meeting?
Happen that night.
Okay, so not Thursday?
No.
No, Tuesday, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, all. Thank you. Good night.